Alicia.
She was heading to her car.
Alicia. Are they gonna put that article in the paper with the young girl, Welder? Are they gonna put anything in there? You know Angela wasn't here that night.
Okay.
Oh, you seen her, that picture?
It's time.
I saw it on Facebook.
We'll call this meeting to order, let the record show that all board members except for Ms. Dunell, hopefully she'll be in shortly. Our president, along with our superintendent and our board attorney will be in very shortly. Would you please stand for prayer and pledge? Heavenly Father, we come at this moment, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the health and the strength and the opportunities that we have. We pray for your blessings upon this meeting, this evening, decisions that will be made, that Lord, in all things, that first it would honor you, but it would be for the very best for our children, our families, our community. We ask for your compassion and your mercy and hope and comfort tonight in the lives of those who've lost loved ones in our district and in our community. But we thank you again for what we have and find in you, and we pray your blessings upon this time, and we ask this in your name, dear Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us now to the adoption of our agenda. Don't think we have any corrections or anything, so Ms. Crawford, when you make that motion, Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. The approval of our minutes of February the 21st, regular school board meeting.
Motion, second.
Ms. Agner, or Ms. Dunell makes that motion?
No, Ms. Agner made, I second.
Okay, I seconded. I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I recuse myself, I wasn't present for the last meeting.
And Deidre did a good job.
I'm sorry?
But Deidre did a good job.
And Ms. Dunell, done a good job. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, presentations and reports, and Ms. Bishers, would you like to take charge of that? Okay?
Sure, we're gonna let, we have Ms. McCarthy from the Department of Health to come up and present the curriculum that's going to be used at our county middle school.
For everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Chastity McCarthy. I'm with the Florida Department of Health in Jefferson and in Madison County. I'd also like to introduce my administrator, Ms. Kimberly Albritton. She's over here, and the administrator in Taylor County, Ms. Tanya Hobby. I'm the supervisor of the Impact Program. I impact my life, mind, body, and spirit. We have three certified health educators in this program that I bring before you this evening for your approval. That's okay. Before I get started, I wanted to tell you a little bit about the history in Taylor County. We've been invited for the past few years to come and teach our curriculum with Taylor Middle School from grade six through eighth. And this year, we have adopted a new curriculum called Real Essentials, which, there's two different books, but we're gonna talk tonight about Starting Point, which is grade six through eighth. I've also provided you with a scope and sequence, which you've gotten ahead of time, and a copy of the curriculum, which you have gotten, received ahead of time. I divided all, I divided the book into age-appropriate levels, which you'll see in the scope and sequence. And each class is eight days long at 55 minutes. And we can change it to meet the school's needs as well. So if the class is 45 minutes, we can do 45 minutes. So we can change depending on what the school would like for us to teach. But I have it set so that we have an outline. This curriculum is a social connection. It improves physical health, mental health, and the emotional well-being of our youth. It also helps with developing healthy relationships, which are essential to life successes. And therefore, relationship education is a vital component for equipping students to thrive. The need to connect and attach and feel affirmed, be valued, respected, and loved is part of the human experience. So with that being said, this curriculum is evidence-based. Oh, I forgot. See, I'm used to other people doing this. It is based on theoretical learning approaches, such as social cognitive learning theory, the theory of planned behavior, social inoculation theory, social norms theory, and behavioral change theory. I gave you a definitional sheet, which is on the last part of your, the presentation, for you to review. All of those theories, all of those theories help with teaching the kids hands-on, giving them a well-rounded approach so that they are able to receive the information. And we also act out some of these skills as well, so it's all hands-on, and the kids absolutely love it. I also have some different examples that I pulled out from the scope and sequence. Sixth grade, we go over the basic needs of the heart. What fills your heart up? A lot of kids, simple things that we think that we, you know, common sense-wise, they don't know. And which creates maladaptive behaviors when they don't understand what makes, what fills their heart. So we go over, how do you feel right now? Where are you at? And they fill in this grid. And then they go through what the basic needs are, and we discuss that with them. This is just one of the hands-on activities, and we go through different definitional types as well, to, you know, to increase their social and cognitive behavior. There's another worksheet that I pulled out, and it is asset building. This one helps students and their parents, because we send home an assessment tool for them to work with their parents as well. So this, these tools are not only for just our students, this is for them to practice at home, so we have like little homeworks here and there, and they get rewarded for bringing that back. And they're just elated when they come back and they tell us this information, and it's exciting. But this helps the students and their parents, or trusted adult, identify developmental assets, and to learn that having more assets makes students less likely to get involved in high-risk behaviors. But they go through this assessment, and we go through it with them. Another, I just pulled some sample lessons out for you, but we know middle school, middle school's like the drama century, you know? It's central, so there's a lot of bullying and a lot of unhealthy relationships and controlling, so we go over that. What does a healthy relationship look like? What does an unhealthy relationship look like? And we go through that, and how, and red flags, how to get out of those situations, what can you do? Can you talk to a trusted adult about it? So we help work them through that process. So, and then another one is with eighth grade, I pulled out overcoming peer pressures. That's another huge aspect that kids are learning at that age. And this teaches students the importance of staying connected to others when making decisions that they, that can affect their lives and their futures. It emphasizes on additional and perspectives, that input, and input that can lead to a better decision-making and outcomes. And I wanted to add, we also go over, you know, what do you want to do when you grow up? We talk about goals and plans, and we help them to understand that those things are gonna change as you get older. So we talk about those things as well, which you'll see in the scope and sequence. And they come up with a plan, they absolutely love it, and things that they might not have thought about, and we research it right there. What do you want to be? What school do you want to go to? Where do you want to work? And so forth. Not only is this curriculum evidence-based, and this curriculum has years and years of scientific research behind it, because it goes over psychological approaches, there's also Florida requirements for schools to, that this helps you meet. So I posted some of those in there, which you'll see, and you can review on your own, and I'm sure that you know some of them, but I pulled some of them out for you, for your review. So it also helps you as well to meet those goals and objectives. We also send home, there is a class registration process, we send home an opt-out form. And it educates parents on what our curriculum is, what the kids will be learning, when the kids will be taking the class. And if the parents have any questions whatsoever, it has my contact information, and they can reach out to me, I, and they can come and either visit and look at the curriculum, or I can meet, you know, meet them at the school and bring it for the school. The school also has a copy of it. The students that, the parents decide that this is not for them, that they want to cover it at home, that's fine. They bring back the form, the school collects it, we get a copy of it for our records, and the school keeps it for their records. The students are placed in another classroom at that time. We normally teach it at Taylor Middle during their PE period. So those, they swap out teachers, so one of the PE coaches will take the teacher, or the students to another area, that way that they're taken from the class. We also offer, I wanted to add, a, an adult class. Not only are we trying to reach our youth and trying to make them well-rounded and productive citizens of our counties, we have to also teach our adults how to communicate with our youth. So we take, some of the things that the kids were talking about was, ah, my mom doesn't listen to me, my dad doesn't listen to me. So as a team and as a health department, we have decided to cover communication skills and how to better communicate. And this could be with their peers, their grandparents, a teacher, and so forth. So this helps the parent to be able to guide that student to healthier communication, which we know that's, that can also prevent maladaptive behaviors when people communicate well, and make them more productive. But I think that's it for me, unless somebody has any questions.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
This is, you said you were teaching this last year, this is new curriculum.
We have taught at the school, but it was a different curriculum.
Yes, what is the major change in this curriculum?
They're very similar. The, the change with this curriculum is a more relationship-based, teaching healthy relationships. So that's an added scope to this curriculum.
Casey, have you seen the result of, do you have any kind of documentation where this has improved your students? I know, but in the past?
No, I will say they did, they loved it, they did also a career fair.
Yes, we just did a career fair.
That was awesome. Our eighth graders, and, you know, walking around and doing that, but no, the kids have always enjoyed, and they enjoy whenever they come. But this will be kind of new.
Yeah, but this, this year, we're going from eighth grade to seventh to sixth, or we've always had six, seven, and eight?
Um, y'all done?
I think we did seventh and eighth.
I'd be curious to see if you could keep some data on this, and see, you know, just observance if nothing else.
And we do have a survey, we have a federal survey right now that is being conducted in the program, and I can record those results, and I can give them to her. And we do an entry survey, but it's solely based on if the parent allows them to take the survey, and the youth has an option to either take the survey or not take the survey, but we do, we have other entry surveys that we can have them take, that is part of the Real Essentials curriculum.
I remember the opting out, and that we've done in the past, I remember that, so.
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, you said this is eight days?
Yes.
Okay, so is it eight consecutive? Like, are you doing like once a week for eight weeks, or is it eight consecutive days?
Um, I can't remember the dates, but it, it met the needs of the school, so we went around their schedule, so it is eight consecutive days.
Okay, and is that each grade level, or is the three people coming in each grade level at the same time?
We rotate our staff so that we're all in there at the same time, as well as the coaches are in there at the same time, or any teachers' aides are there while we teach, but we do have all three, well, we have four of us all together, myself included.
Okay.
So we are all four there.
And Casey, this, it was stated that this is during the PE time, and if the kids don't want to participate, they go to an alternative placement. But for those kids that want to engage in PE, are they still allowed to be in PE, or do they have to go to the alternative placement? So is there a reason why we're doing it in PE and not like doing a critical thinking time? Okay, so that's just sixth graders? Okay. And my second, well, another question I have, you said this is the first time we're doing this particular program, so the board has not approved this yet, right? We have not approved this. Is it just presented to us tonight, and we're gonna approve at another date, or are we approving this tonight? Okay. And my other question is, I see on here you got that, under Florida statute, that we do have some statutory requirements into health education, but do we know if this curriculum?
It's just only the presentation.
Okay.
It has already been vetted, if that was gonna be, I think that, would you look at this? So our director of instruction, I think is, I'm sorry, I think is where, that was my question too, I think we're, I think we're, was, is this appropriate with the parental choice?
Yes, I was about to ask, is this appropriate under our new standards from Department of Education?
So they had to give all this to Jill, and Jill ran it through to make sure that it met those standards, to be able, to be acceptable.
It, in April. It begins in April, yes. Third week in April.
Now, what was, and forgive me, because I, I looked for this, but I think I overlooked it on my agenda. What was presented to the board? Did we have actually information in regards to the curriculum, or did we just have these present, the PowerPoint that we have tonight? Okay, so we don't, we didn't really get access to the curriculum as a board?
That's what I was looking at. I do have a copy of the curriculum.
Okay.
That would be good.
But, but.
If, if the intent is to approve the curriculum tonight, I'd ask that you amend your agenda to add an item that the board take out.
Alicia said it was not on there for tonight, for approval.
Not for approval, this was just a presentation, because.
Okay, understood.
I apologize, I misspoke earlier. This was just a presentation, because we've already looked at it, and we've already determined that it passed, passes that test. I know what you're, what you're saying, but.
But the board has not been able to look at the curriculum, right?
Only what was already in your packet, which was this.
Which was this present, okay, all right, but do we have access as a board to the curriculum? That's what my question is.
I have provided a copy of the curriculum, did you get a copy of the curriculum? Yeah. Okay, and that's another copy. That's the same.
But, but the question is, does it require board approval? That's, I think that's where you're getting to.
Yeah, that's my question, but if it requires board approval, I, I myself, I would like to take a, a look at the curriculum. I want to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They're not gonna start it till April, so we have time either way, that will be time to table that. Let this be just the presentation tonight, and you all can have time.
That's my question, you go ahead, Jamie.
I just have, I have one question for Casey. Casey, have, um, parents, how do they do with the opt-out form? Have you had very many that chose to opt-out? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, I've seen it, and even kindergarten up, you know, they have the flashcards for the, you know, small group stuff, this type thing, and it's amazing, it really is.
Yes.
I have a question, Danny. My question is back to the adults or the parents, you said they, there was, there's some training available for them.
Yes, we also.
How do you do that?
What we do is, whatever organization is, they are, they're interested in it, we set up a class, and my staff and I, we come out and we teach the class.
Is it after hours, or?
Yeah, we could do it after hours, during hours, whenever you.
I think, I think the question is, how do, how does the community know it's available? I think is what.
We haven't started teaching it in Taylor yet, but we can. It's available.
So you would advertise that maybe in our newspaper or something?
Could, mhm.
Okay.
Wouldn't you have it with the adults or the children in there with the parents?
We, we typically do not have the adults in there with, with them.
I mean, when you have the adult, do the children come with the adults?
No, it's, it's just for the adults, because we cover the other, we cover the, that, the other curriculum with this youth. So it's just the adults with the communication. Because we cover it during the class time with the youth, so it's the same stuff. And we want to give the adults an opportunity to be able, but we've never had anybody bring any, uh, youth in, but it's appropriate enough that they could bring their, their youth there, and that wouldn't be a problem either.
Well, thank you for your time, I think we are just looking over some things, because I, my board members are very concerned because of things that have come down in the past year legislatively, and we want to make sure that we have all of our eyes dotted and our teeth crossed, and so I appreciate their concern and wanting to look that over for themselves, so.
I, I definitely agree with you. I get it.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, will you scan that and send it out to us?
Okay, thank you.
You might need to, you might need to let Shanna scan it, just to make sure it doesn't seem like we scanning amongst ourselves.
I'll ask.
I don't like to stay in one place. Okay, what you've all been waiting for. You all asked for this? We ready. I told you, as soon as we got the data, we'd, we'd have it ready for you, and I'm trying to stay true to my word. I probably would not have won any Tropicana speeches back in the day, but I'm gonna do my best to go through our mid-year data analysis, have all my principals, or principals and assistant principals here that are gonna help me when I mess up, and they're gonna jump in and tell you all the great things that they're doing along the way. Okay, so we're ready? All right. Okay, here we are, the latest and the greatest board members, you have this in front of you, so hopefully you can follow along, and like I said, principals, APs, feel free to jump in anytime you'd like, if I mess up, just let me know. My first graph we're looking at tonight is our overall student growth on survey three, and this is our students who are here as of survey three that we have data for, based on our mid-year fast progress monitoring data. And you'll see it goes from K to grade 10 in ELA, and from K to grade eight in math. Visual shows us overall student growth for this year's students in grades K to 10 in English Language Arts and K eight in math. It allows us to see what grade and subject areas as a whole are making a year's worth of growth in a year's time. So you guys will notice the headings here, this is gonna be hard for me, because I don't like to sit in one place. So you'll see the headings. I added over here, I think, was it better here or over there? Okay, so headings and the average growth from prior year, which is based on national percent, so this is, from the national, average growth from prior years based on national percentages. This is national percentage. Um, this is relative to state here, but remember this is based on. Okay, so, now they messed me up. This center point's kind of like, we can think of like the break-even point, and when I say break-even, it's not really break-even, it's just meaning that if the stu, if the students reach this mid-point, that means that they've made a year's worth of growth in a year's time. So you want them basically to be at least in this center line. Anything to the right is showing that these students are growing more than a year's worth of time. Backward, that's a regression. They're not getting a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time. This is not looking at proficiency, levels three and above, this is purely looking at growth. So there's a reason for that, we'll get into that in just a minute. So you also notice these exclamation points. These exclamation points are, I'll look at, let's just say I'm looking at third grade. This is where last year's third grade group was. That's the most, so it's not the same third graders this year, does that make sense? This is their, these kids around fourth grade, this exclamation point. This is where our third graders are this year. So when you all look at this, what do you notice?
Gains.
We're going in the right direction, we're growing, we've got momentum. So.
That 173, that means 173 students?
Say that again.
Does the 173 means 173 students? Okay.
Okay, so maybe they took luck a lot, maybe they're working students on average, um, it's growing, and maybe to less, they are not. However, when you see things, um, from like, white on the line, like this one, I have to say that there's, there's, there's not, um, losing ground, they're probably, they're still gaining, because even though they didn't do as good as the peers from the following year, I mean, the previous year, they're still doing good, because they're to the right of the line, not only that, but you've got to think they're, the work is getting
The rigor is going on.
The work is getting more difficult, so anytime they're to the right, it is good. And you can see some areas that we have parts right, I mean, and you can see some areas that we have wide factors.
So on the ELA, on ELA, under eighth grade, you got a negative one? It look like it's going left? Am I reading that right? Is the red mark look like it's going left?
It's that close to the point they put the percentage, because it's really, probably a standard deviation, not really, so they're, it's probably, excuse me, about the same.
Okay, and in the fifth grade, you said the exclamation mark meant that's what it was last year? So fifth grade is still losing ground?
The fifth grade, this is where their peers were the year before, this is where this group of fifth graders are, so, last year, that group of fifth graders did not look very good at this time of year, and this year's fifth graders will.
The same, the same, okay.
Questions, comments? Um, you'll notice kindergarten has a very thin line, and that's just because the only data that exists for kindergarten are for students who are retained, so they really don't have any data other than those few kindergartners. So they really don't have any data other than those few kindergartners that are retained, so.
Now, prior to FAST, the only information we had on our kindergarteners is what we did district far as progress monitoring, right?
Well, they always had to take the, Laura, help me out.
I read it last year.
But you also did something else at the state.
But that's our stuff, right? That's like in-house stuff. Like, I read it is what we do in-house. FAST is state, right?
It is, but we also had to do kindergarten readiness, which was.
Okay.
Which was the state. Okay.
That is only showing our, that thin line is only showing.
Okay.
Oh, okay. But this is like new for our kindergarteners, like far as this level of assessment, right?
FAST is new from here.
Yeah. Okay.
What's really strange to me is the, I'm already down on math. The math, and it's first grade, it's going on with it. Okay, you get to the second grade, and whoop, they're going backwards. Then you get to third grade, and they're really gaining. So what's the deal there?
That's a great question. So this is one of the reasons that we look at this. And the reason we look at this instead of just proficiency is that this is average growth. That means every group, every kid that's in that grade group. So what it will show us is if all of our kids on average are growing. As you pointed out, this one we see growth, and first we see growth in third, but that second, we see that really big slide backwards.
Is there, is there a different teacher for first, second, and third?
Absolutely, yes, there are different teachers. And so since Laura's here, she's going to come on up, and she's going to tell you some of the reasons. So we have had these, yeah, guys, y'all get ready, because you're next. So we have already problem solved. We've been at the school, I've asked the hard questions. I've tried not to make anybody cry, but sometimes it just happens. But they know I do it out of love. So they, she can explain to you, I already know why, but I'm going to let you hear from her what's going on in her second grade. They had a year where they had, go ahead.
We have changed multiple teachers in second grade this year. Like, we've changed three second grade teachers in the last three months. Teachers, two teachers have moved on to other careers. One of them had to be replaced. So we are, we meet with our second grade teachers currently. We are meeting with our second grade teachers twice a week, because we do see the deficit. Our second grade is struggling this year. As you can see, the second graders last year weren't struggling quite as much. We started the year with six new second grade, new second grade, brand-new teachers, new math curriculum, all of that. So they, we are meeting with them twice a week. We are breaking down the best standards. We are making sure that they're teaching the standards to fidelity, making sure that they're using the academic vocabulary that the students need to hear. And they're having the data chats with teachers, talking to the teachers. But we meet with them regularly to try to, because we're trying to fix that.
And since I have you up here, Laura, can you tell me, why is growth such an important thing to look at instead of just overall proficiency?
Well, we are looking at, we need to make sure that if your child is, so if they're only making a year's worth of growth, are they growing, are they growing like they need to be growing?
Right.
And we need to make sure that, like, if I have a child that is a level three, I need to maintain that from year to year.
Right.
So that we make sure that we're not losing those kids, so they're not losing ground.
Right, right.
So the reason we really look at this is when, so when an administrator has a data chat with their teachers, what this will look like for them is a little bit differently. A little bit different, but it's really the same thing. But it will just have their whole list of kids out. And they will look at each kid and see where they're at, and if they're growing. And as Laura said, I put her on the spot, she did great. It's important, because, you know, we always spend a lot of time helping our lower kids catch up, but what we found district-wide is when we just put that emphasis on our lower kids, a lot of our fours and fives are grassed backwards.
Right.
And so that's why growth is such an important piece of information to look at every time.
Now, how many second grade classes do we have? Do we just have six?
I mean, we have 11 second grade, 11 first grade, and 12 kindergarten.
And six of those teachers was new, and you've replaced three of them this year. Wow.
So what that nod is saying is, I know next year, when I'm placing, I'm probably going to do some restructuring. I can tell you, because they've told me that. You know, they, they would, they're going to spread those veterans out a little bit, based on this year's data. So we're living, we're learning, we're growing, we're changing. We're going to do better every time.
Can I ask that question for Ms. Heather with her ninth graders?
So my ninth graders, I did, I also lost ninth grade. All to a different career, and so.
Hold on just a second. There, okay, there was a loss, but look at this. Tell everybody what that means.
Yeah, what the 13 point for me?
So that exclamation point is, well, that's your half.
Yeah.
And they were last year's ninth grade group.
They've gained this way. They're going this way.
Yeah.
Not quickly enough.
It's not quickly enough. It's not like the tenth grade group.
That 10th grade look good.
The 10th grade would be last year's ninth grade.
Now, you had.
So they definitely made above a year, if you look at it that way, this year.
Now, you started out with, maybe this was.
Okay.
This is, this is not French work. This was the data from.
When they were in the eighth grade?
This is only based on I read it.
No, that's this year. That's this year.
That's why, but it's the I read it data. That's why I'm looking at the 10th grade. This grade doesn't happen.
You said the exclamation is where they were last year, is what you had said.
They were similar. Schools are going to report here with students from the prior year, but I'm telling you the 10th grade doesn't ever happen. I don't know if that's where they were at all. Makes me question that.
So this.
That is what it says, but I don't know if that.
Well, the 10th grade doesn't have an exclamation point.
Right, because they didn't have any prior years out of it.
Right. Okay, so the ninth grade does. So last year's ninth grade class would be this year's 10th grade class. So the negative.
Whether or not that, I'd have to go back and look at this. That is what it says.
Okay.
I have to go back. I don't remember if ninth grade was, I mean, if those 10th graders were that low last year, do you think they were that low? I thought they were at like 40, I don't know. It doesn't matter, because this is growth. You're right, this is growth. This is not necessarily proficient, this is not.
I just got one more question about the ninth grade, because I don't want y'all to get stuck on this one sheet. No, because you got some more data back here we want to know about. You got, it started out with 149, and then it went to 167. So is that an increase in just those FAST one and FAST two? Okay, so is it, you had that many new students? Or you had that many new testers? Like, what was it? Okay. Yeah, look like all our schools have gotten a lot of enrollees. Yeah, growth this year. Okay. 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 Yeah, it is good.
It is.
Alright, this next slide shows us achievement over time. You'll notice that the top portion of the graph is the estimated school grade equivalent, and the bottom indicates the percentage of students that are scoring three or higher. The percentages, of course, correlate with indicated grade above. This particular data is looking at the same group of students over time. Okay, so when we look at this data. The open circle, I know it's a very wrong beyond the street, but the open circle indicates where they were the prior year, the last assessment period, the prior year on our progress monitor data. The quarter circle shows where they were at the beginning of the year on our first assessment period data. And the half circle shows where they were at the latest. The straight line is whether or not they had FSA data from the prior year. So unlike the previous graph, this is the same group of kids. So when you see those straight lines, that really was where they were. This is the same cohort.
So the circle that's not shaded, it says FAST prior year. I thought this was the first school term we did FAST.
It is, but they. Okay, so.
No, you got one for FSA, but it says FAST.
That is the progress monitoring. And so what K-12 left did was they took the FAST data, and they put it on a, I don't know, they did some kind of Houdini magic. They showed us all the formulations to that, and they kind of like put that in a, what we're considering FAST percentages this year, and they tried to like backwards-run that data, if that makes sense. They made it correlate.
Okay, alright.
Even though they did not take FAST last year, they're trying to line that up based on the data we have so far this year.
Okay.
And I'm sure it's not perfect. They said it's not probably going to be perfect.
Yeah.
But it is looking at the same group of students over time. Okay. You know, you don't need a PhD to understand that green lines are good and red are not as good.
Well, it's compatible with the first sheet, pretty much.
Say that again.
I said it's just kind of like the first sheet.
Kind of, but the other one was just showing growth. This is showing actual proficiency, what they're, if they're.
Well, you can, you can look at your, you can look at your math second grade, and you can see it's about the same.
Well, right, you can draw some similarities there. So let's take a closer look. Look at your eighth grade math. Look at that at the bottom. What do y'all think there?
I think we had some eighth grade math teachers.
Look at that eighth grade math, doesn't that look amazing? You know what's even better about that?
The first grade looks amazing.
You know, it's, we know it's great about the eighth grade math?
It can be not great.
You know, you know what those scores are based on?
What?
Those are just kids who are in level one and two. Every other grade on that graph are all kids in all levels, one through five. When you look at eighth grade, remember, those kids that qualified for Algebra I, they don't test this. So those 117 kids are only level one. So.
That's good.
So last year, they was up under F, but now they're up under B. Is that what they're saying?
That's what it's saying.
Oh, that's awesome.
That is awesome.
Okay, but it's, but, but, let's, before we think all the red lines are bad, we've got to take a little closer look. Look at fifth grade ELA. First glance, see a red line. Rachel, I think that's bad, but tell these viewers why that's the, why fifth grade. Get up here, come on. You can't see fifth grade ELA. Get up there and talk to us about fifth grade ELA. No, she's the one who's been on the, I would love Mr. Finley. She just seems to be the one that's the, she's had.
What does the red line mean?
Fifth grade ELA. Talk to me about fifth grade ELA. Got a red line, I think it's bad. Is it bad?
No, I mean, they're still in the C range. They're close to the B range.
Why do we have a red line then? I thought red was bad.
Well, that's based from, but if you look at where we saw. FAST prior, sorry, that's the prediction, which we know is not true. The fifth grade did not score in the B range.
Okay.
That was inaccurate. But if you look at quarter, the half, I mean, the quarter circle there, right there, that's on the CD line, which did work bad. And so they, they have gotten, so whereas we may not be seeing as many kids making a year's growth, we are seeing more kids getting to that achievement level. And I'll be honest with you, achievement's all the same. Always worried about growth, it's in the back of our minds. But as far as school grade this year, it's just three, four, and five. So that's what we're thinking. So we're seeing them, and there's a good chance that they'll actually get to the B range.
So for the FAST one, it said that they was like on the CD line, but for the FAST two, it says they're closer to B? Yeah. No, the FAST one, that other circle, is that, am I reading that right? Is that like a CD?
You're right, and FAST one was where FAST one's right here, right?
Right.
Quarter circle, and it was kind of like where they left out the year before. Why they're at that, if I say.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I say that C line. So if I forget about what progress monitor said last year, because, you know, because they don't carry, they're literally putting it at the same. And I'm looking from assessment period one to assessment period two, even though that line's not green, forget that.
But they did have growth.
Look at the growth they're making.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Remember, Mr. Bray is counted in there as well. So this, I think he has a larger picture, I think he's on the other side. I think they have like 17 or 18 fifth graders. And so that does help the district a little bit, but we're still seeing the same thing with that.
Okay.
I just want us to be careful. So I do want us to be careful when we're just looking at colors, you know, because initially, that's our reaction when I put it up to our.
Yeah, third grade look good.
Oh, my gosh, look at all the red lines. So you have to be very careful by how you look at it, because that'll tell you whatever story you want it to tell. You can manipulate it if you really try. You've got to be careful. But some bright shining moments? Start, tell us about some of your bright shining features over there at. How's third grade ELA looking? Their third grade's got it going on. How's, any other work coming, sorry, there?
I'll be honest.
Good.
So it look like y'all got gains right now with fifth grade ELA and ELA math, just based off this chart, right?
From FAST one.
Yeah, from FAST one and two. Right, I know what y'all told me that was. That's what's estimated. So what about sixth grade, with this, your sixth grade math? Am I looking at that right? For your sixth grade math?
They don't have a last year on there.
No, I'm not asking about last year.
The line is kind of one.
Yeah.
They were at 27%. So this is where they're at right here, in the FSA. But either way, they're moving back. You can tell that those two circles are sitting on top of each other.
Right.
So the one they took during AP one and then AP two, you don't see, there's not much movement. Either way, they've gone backwards from FSA in the end of the year data. So we're seeing this slide backwards.
But not, not much. Is that the same for the ELA also? Yeah.
Well, you can see where they were, so the straight lines where they were for FSA, and it's actually, they're actually showing a little bit of growth. You see the line was green. So from the previous year to the beginning of the year, we showed a little bit of growth, and then you see where it might have been a slight backwards, but probably not, because anytime it's that.
All of a slide, we say could be a standard deviation. The fact that it was green.
Or probably, you can assume that it wasn't.
Yeah, it looks like from FAST one and FAST two, it look like it's going backwards. But the sixth graders are the fifth graders from last year, right? Now, with your kindergarten math, it's a green line, but you said that circle that they projected, is that correct?
In the F area is because that's only, that's only based on the kids who had data last year. So the kindergartners that would have had data last year are the ones that were retained this year as a kindergarten.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on. Okay. One everybody likes to look at. One everybody likes to look at. And we get to our school grade projections. This is the same data, just in a different format. Um, this shows all of each site's data rather than broken down by grade level. So here, we're kind of zooming out and looking at the big picture. We know this big picture isn't a complete picture, uh, because it does not include all the categories that go into a school grade, like our science and EOC scores, nor does it consider the acceleration points that our middle and high school can earn. This is only our reading and math data, but yeah, that's a pretty big chunk of learning. Um, remember those exclamation points show where that grade, not these students were the prior year.
And that prior year is for the whole year. This is for this, this half a year.
Right.
So.
So the, so the exclamations are based on prior year progress monitoring data, not necessarily FSA data.
Right.
Okay.
But all of these go up, so that's good.
So if you look at the first blue line, that's where they were AP one.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the second blue line, that's where they were AP two. Then if you look above, you'll see the grade, how that kind of correlates to a grade. So Jimmy was first. Everybody knows Jimmy. Um, so AP one, um, he was projected to be a B in ELA. You can see he's preceded that now. So not only has he gone above what they did the prior year with the other cohort, he's moved his grade in ELA, probably from a B to a solid A.
Mm-hmm.
And that. Math, um, same way he had. Was, um, over here, he was in, still in the A range, but now he is far greater to the A range and he is getting back to where that group was last year. They're kids, but you can see where that group is still. Their teachers are probably remain the same and.
So with the blank line exclamation, is that a projection?
That's what it was last year.
That was the prior year. Exclamation point is always the prior year and the different cohort, their previous cohort.
Is the exclamation on the colored line, is that the one you're talking about? You see, there's exclamations between the FSA one.
It's a FSA.
Oh, that's the FSA.
Yeah, that was from last year.
The other exclamation points are from the progress monitoring data, it's something that we use.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Alright, so Jimmy's projected to have an A again. If he continues, um, on this trajectory, it'll be a higher rating than what he had before. Okay? Um, Taylor County Elementary, we, we know where they were last year, you can see your exclamation point. Um, so AP one, LA, we were, we were back where we weren't in the D or we were in a D, but as you can see, they're closing the gaps, and look what's happening in AP two.
That's good. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Moved on there in that mid, mid C, if they keep on moving that strong, it could be a, a B, a C, that's amazing.
It look like they're a B in their math though, right? Mm-hmm.
And then in EL, I'm sorry, in the math, yes, in ELA and then in math, they have taken it not only out of the D range, but look all the way into the B range.
That's awesome. That is good.
Look at the grades from AP one, which, when did y'all take AP one? That was at the beginning of the year.
That was like September, right?
So look at that part.
Yeah, that's amazing.
So the elementary school, um, what's not included up here is our science course, you know, that, we don't have that predicted, um, data. However, if we stay on this, we're going to be looking at a at least. We're really gonna. Really gonna push, push, push and see where we get. Okay, Taylor County Middle School, um, last year we were in the C range and we've got some work to do here. Um, you can see on AP one overall, they were here, they've moved a little bit in AP two, still a lot because of what they were last year. However, in math, you can tell that that eighth grade math is really helping them push through a little bit. Again, not as good as they were last year.
We need that.
Moving in the right direction between AP one.
We need that AP three to give us in a C. For ELA and math.
We do need it. Got to push hard. So Casey can tell you some of the things Casey's got, you want to tell them some of the things that we're doing at the middle school. Because this is, we're going to be just honest, open and honest with y'all. We know, I mean, when we look at this, we look at our kindergarten data, we look at our second grade data, we're looking at this middle school data. We know as a district where we need to focus.
There's been many a tier shift, mostly mine. I mean, we kind of knew this and I've been helping this year about it most of the school year. And then, then we got this a couple weeks ago, it was like, and so we got busy working even more. And we've been reading, last week we met all day long, I met with individual reading and math teachers and with them, showed it to them. Tried to, or had a few tears and what do I need to do? So they've been getting with a bond more about what else I can, you know, bring into my classroom. Couple weeks ago, I actually brought this in front of, not this slide, but I was lied to my whole packet and said, this is, this is right now. Um, it's a lot of them. I think a lot of them realized after words, oh, she's talking to me now. I'm not feeling one of us. Um, so some things that we're trying to change, and I know by looking at this, mine's a big one. Um, met with all my teachers, or ELA tech math teachers individually last week, myself, Hartsville and the teacher, just the three. Tomorrow, all day long, Hartsville, myself, and the, the wing of teachers, but we split by wing, are meeting as a whole group, because we're, my biggest thing is taking away from my history and science teachers have to take ownership too, they're getting that score. Worry that in the past several years, we've got the way of that's ELA scores, that's their teacher, but your scores go on there too. So you're getting that score. So history and science, I've got to, not that they're not already, but we've got to step up even more doing that part. Um, so that's a big things that I'm doing. Are being those small groups in those wing areas. Our instructional director, so this going in and have auto, I have four permits up on hand, on hand.
Your school needed the most teachers this year though. Didn't at the beginning of the year, you had, it was your school that had the most need for teachers though at the beginning of the year, right? Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
After school tutoring and then home court wins are working.
How's your attendance for your tutoring?
Not been the best.
Is it increasing now that it's up and going?
More, I think so. They, I don't know the numbers today, I'm going to show those because I've been here all afternoon. But it's been a hit and miss with it, with the kids, but we're trying to get them to reach out to the parents.
Did we do a newspaper, um, ad that we had tutoring, Alicia?
We did, like every kid, because we didn't have them sign up, but I was like, just send them, just, you know.
So the thing is.
We started getting a lot and then they signed up.
Don't show.
And so the issue with that is that like at our higher grades, we have, we don't have as many, and then our lower grades, we don't, it's like we don't, we have too many. So um, that's where that hits us as a district.
We're also, you know, dealing with behavior issues a lot as, with middle school, classroom and. Another thing that I was telling, um, oh, with that, we're also getting our MTSS, Ms. Witten really helping with these behavior issues and trying to come up with ideas instead of just suspensions or a guy and all this. But I'm meeting with the teachers, I've decided that every single student between now and testing, somehow I'm going to meet, met myself and Hartsville and Ms. Um, Witten. Ms. Morgan said she would kind of help us. We're going to meet with every single student individually, from back in the years ago, when we used to do DIPPLEs. Y'all remember DIPPLEs, where you set a desk outside the hallway, and that way the teachers and the team, and the leadership team is going to meet and be go through their data, the three year data they have, where they are and what we need, and get set some goals for every single student. So it starts with the week we come back from spring break, we're going to get them over that. I think that they hear from us and other teachers agree, versus hearing from the teacher, the teacher don't have time to do that. They've already met with students throughout after FAST, but really dive in deep with every single student, spending that one-on-one from in Padmeon. The teacher said, do you think we can do this and get a C? I said, oh, yeah, we can do it. We're coming up with incentives. I'll just shade my.
Don't put that in the paper. Please don't put that in the paper.
Too much information, Casey, too much information.
Yeah.
But what days are, is after school tutoring every day?
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
And is there an identified group for after school tutoring?
Originally, it was the VOK, it was the VOK, but now we've invited any of them to do it.
So do you still do, do you do the robo-call each, each night before reminding them about the tutoring the next day?
Honestly, at this point, the parents and the student got to decide if they want to do it. I mean, um, I don't mean to cut anybody off, but this is not easy getting up here and presenting this data. And I mean, I've been in the schools and I'm, I'm witnessing firsthand what a lot of them, I mean, I was at the middle school yesterday and y'all had kids doing, um, the after school cleanup and they were still acting out. I mean, at this point, students and parents have got to take accountability. I mean, I signed my daughter up and she don't even need it, but if the school is going to provide a resource, why not take advantage of it? I mean, we, we can't feed them. I mean, it's, they got to do their part and I, I, as a community, this is a community issue. We're faced with it. We're the one tasked to do it. But again, we get what comes. And it got to be a partnership at this point, because we have a lot on us as a state, as a school board, I mean, as parents, as teachers, as administrators. At this point, we need our parents and our students to decide what do education mean to them.
I happened to be in the lunchroom the other day. I got to come volunteer at the lunchroom. And I counted sixth graders and there was 240 something of them. I was shocked, but they were so well behaved. I was surprised. Everybody's going, what? But they were. And you're letting them use their laptops that keeps some occupied. And then Stuart was doing a great job, but here's the problem I saw. He can't see all of them. So there, if anybody wants to go volunteer at lunchtime, so when they all start raising hands, he's like, you know, this. And of course, he had one man helping him and then Mr. Johnson showed up. But it was just, it was a fun, you know, the kids were very respectful. Uh, one little girl would try to get me to sign her mother's name to, so she could go, I think you were having a dance that day, she said.
Was that the sixth graders?
Six, sixth grader. She says, she said, can you write in cursive? She said, can you sign this name right here?
She was transparent.
So I said, no, you better, better go see the administrator about that.
So just anyway, Casey, back to, I just mean, if the robo-call, did, you said it did help increase kids coming to tutoring? So. I, I hear parents say, I need a tutor. I need a math tutor. I need a, well.
Yeah, they got blessing.
Do you feed them?
So I think they need to put that.
They get snacks.
I think they need to put that thought in their mind, I need a tutor to, after school tutoring is here and it's free and we can help with that. They need to correlate those two because, um, a lot of parents say their kids need tutors and, you know, there it is. I don't think they realize after school tutoring equals and the buy-in, yeah. They've got to be there for their kids and the kids have got to be there for themselves, so. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go back to this. So thank you, Casey, for sharing all that. And we do know that, um, that, you know, on top of everything else, we have, uh, uh, this is not an excuse, this is, this is just the truth. So we have, um, puberty happens during those years, so sixth, seventh, and eighth grade years, and, um, not only that, but that is where we have the most, um, children, I would say, acting out and, um, expressing anger and probably the highest need for counseling and things come from that school. That is where our highest number of, um, threats originate from, I would say. And it is, but it's, 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 it's that age. You know, it's that age where they're finding themselves and finding out where they belong and all that contributes to academics. So I appreciate the board's consideration and, and, um, comments that, you know, it does take all of us. It is a team and we need parents and students to be part of that team. The teachers can't do it all. So let's move on to the high school. So high school, um, between AP one and AP two, again, you can see that they are going the right way. The trajectory is looking good. I mean, if we go back to that other slide before, you can see that, um, it's amazing to see where ninth grade came in at and, um, I mean, I'm sorry, where 10th grade was as a ninth grader and how far they've come. And so she's, we can see these little pockets of teams when we look at data like the other slides and this one as well, that we can see what's kind of looking, what's working for us, what teams are working well and what things we might need to adjust. So the next slide.
Can I ask one question? Um, with the ninth graders, um, and it's probably 10th graders too, Heather. Um, you know, most of the kids that don't do algebra, um, before they get to the high school, we don't have FAST, um, that's really checking their math, but what is their progress monitoring looking at right now?
For, so they don't, the state does not do anything?
I know the state don't, but what are, what, what is it looking like for us, like as a district?
Eighth grade is the only one that does math. Um, Heather, you can, you and Dave pinch up in here and tell me, what are y'all doing something different for? But it doesn't show, it doesn't correlate, I mean, we don't have it in here, but they do Exact Path and actually the middle school's also switched Exact Path this year. So their data is based on, you know, we look at the prior year, it's based on already, but we've switched six through 10th grade actually for Exact Path.
But what is it looking like? Okay. Thank you.
And with us changing 612, there may be more changes because we're finding some of these state assessments. Um, well, FAST is feeding into some of these programs directly, so they don't have to take another test. So like when they take their first assessment in the fall, it would automatically give them a path with, with some of these other companies. And so we may see those changes and we may, next year, when we come back next year, um, you may be able to see that for those other grades as well. I'm hoping, I'm hoping, so.
Well, I was really just interested in that cohort that, you know, they don't get to take their algebra in the middle school, but them tend to be our level ones and two when they get to the high school in ninth and 10th grade, so.
Okay. Finally, we have our achievement level distributions. Um, what's a little bit different about this graph is that it actually breaks down how many students we have in each grade by their predicted achievement level and it allows us to see our overall movement. So of course, what we want to see, and this one's a little bit, you know, all the other ones you're used to seeing, the good on the right, um, this one's a little bit different. So here, we're looking to see, um, we want to see more greens and blues and less reds and oranges. Okay, so it's kind of backwards, but the reason it's backwards is because if you look at the bottom and that percentage of students from that, that, that number line at the bottom, that's why it's presented this way. So this is just our ELA K5. And these are our percentage students that are in each, um, level. So again, this is where you want them. Reds and, and the oranges. So if you'll see from, we, and we used to do this years ago. We used to do these, um, walks and we still kind of do, but, um, that was one thing as a assistant principal, I remember we had to get the data up and we had to say how many level ones, how many level twos, threes, fours, and fives. And then every time we had another assessment, we had to see if our numbers were moving. So you can look at this data and you can see, um, I don't know, take, let's take fourth grade. Fourth grade to begin with, you can see on AP one, they did not have any, um, fives. On the fourth AP one. On the second one, 4% of them are fives. Or if they went from 15% to 16%, they decreased their level twos. Or yeah, the level twos, I'm sorry, they increased it from 23 to 28%, but that's because they're decreasing their two, ones and twos. That, you can see the, how movement is what that to be.
And these are all your level fours? Like, I mean, this is all fourth graders, like Stanhatchee and elementary? Yeah.
Two hundred and four, so I'm not, I'm not, y'all know.
Okay, alright.
But all of them combined. I think it's both.
Okay.
And, um, this also correlates these dark black lines. I can't tell you off the top of my head, except for fourth, I have to see. But these dark black lines that you'll see, if you make 40, above 42%, you're going to get a C. I think 41 of them, I'm sorry, you'll have a C for your school grade. And then. And then, so the percentage of points correlates your grade. And I, and I should have made that. A percentage, you know, to have a B and an A. Okay, I got it. Say it again?
Fifty-four is a B.
Four is a B.
It's good, you know.
You know, if you wrote this down in my gradebook, you'll see that that fifth grade... Any questions? That's showing our movement with ELA. Here, we see the same thing with our...
Excuse me.
I'll look at that for just a minute, digest that. Questions, comments?
Got it.
Yeah, and fifth grade's really moving. Um, they have, I'm gonna let you tell them, you guys tell them. What have y'all done in math in um fifth grade?
Yeah, that math does look good.
Coming in, the fifth grade math teacher refused to turn that they lost up their instructional time via departmental lines. Um, so we saw the data, that's due on board, so fifth grade extended their instructional day. We were able to have 15 minutes of fifth grade math and fifth grade science. Eleven additional, eleven additional instructional days.
Wow. That is good.
So that's a...
But it's huge.
See?
Made a difference.
And look at the black bar, how it's moved.
Yeah.
From the C range to, in math, fifth grade, looking at a... That holds steady, okay. And we've gone, our ELA and math for six through, and then six through eight.
I think she's done. All right.
Comments, concerns?
Some good data.
Yeah, it is really good data.
Appreciate all that work, put that together.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the best data y'all ever gave us.
Thank you. What she means to say is it's the best data presentation she's ever had.
No, I mean, this is the...
And we are moving in the right direction and I just want to say...
No, don't let her put words in my mouth. This is the best I've been able to comprehend from this district and I, I really appreciate y'all 'cause um, yeah, I, I, I'd be the first to say I felt like I could never read anything before, but this was very detailed and I felt like I was able to see and understand and comprehend. But I think what I liked the most is the numbers are moving and like you say, it was not just about proficiency, it's about being able to see the kids growing. Cause that's, that's what, I mean, that's what I want to know as a parent. What did my child learn that year? So I, I mean, I remember when I first became a board member, it seemed like one school was always a shining school and it was like no regard for the district as a whole, but seemed like we've had some growth and we're understanding, you know, that all data is important, no matter where, what it looks like, but we need to know where we're at and what we need to do to fix it. So I appreciate you guys. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Very proud. And I'm gonna tell you that I've also have Jill Rudd here. We've all met her before. She's our Director of Instruction. So she champions a lot of these things that go on at our schools as far as these walks with the Department of Education when the Bureau of School Improvement comes. Um, she's been instrumental in finding um the funds to, to pay for lots of these things that we're saying we're do, we're doing and that we need. Um, and then you've got Melanie Morgan beside her, who is our MTSS champion. She makes it live. Um, so we've looked a lot at grades and things, but you know, there is the understanding that we have a lot of other needs besides grades. Behaviors are a huge concern in our district. And so Melanie um makes sure that not only are, is she supporting those MTSS coordinators at those schools in academics, but also she's been a very instrumental in helping with our behaviors as well. Is there anything you two ladies would like to say?
I can give my little paper tomorrow. Of course, I brought a gift for everyone. So you said, "We look at the data." And I think, um, Miss Melanie just said, "We look at it." Now we want to ask, what, what are we gonna do with that data? And that's where um MTSS goes in and uses all of your wonderful administrators, speak on all of the things that they're doing. So when um, when we talk about MTSS, remember we were talking about that multi-tiered system of support, which is really just a framework for the support that we want to provide academically and behaviorally. So I'll let you thumb through the pages and the benefits of MTSS. But if you go to the one, two, three, fourth page, um, this is where we really take the data and um start making decisions about what we're going to do. So this is grade, um, grade level and school level wise. The tier two supports, tier one is what everyone gets. Um, that's your differentiated um core instruction. Tier two is they need a little more support. That's usually in a small group in addition to their tier one differentiation support. And then tier three is that more intensive um support. So you can look at those numbers on your own, but right now you can see that um tier two, we have 713 students out of the 2,442 in our district, which is 29% of our students are receiving um small groups instruction, um support and intervention. And then tier three, we have 498 students or 20% that are, of our students in our district that are receiving um intensive supports. And that comes with different um their counseling classes that we have, MTSS cool-out groups, our after-school tutoring. Um, the elementary school has um what they call um a win time, so they have like a triple I intervention time going on. Um, the next two pages are just um examples of what we do weekly and monthly when we visit the schools with the coordinators and the admin teams as far as goal setting, um what our interventions are looking like and how we're supporting our students. And then the next two pages are where um Ms. Rudd comes in and she can find us all of that great funding to support all of the many programs that we're using on in our schools to provide that intervention support. So really, we want to be proactive. We look at our data as soon as it comes in, um, our progress monitoring, iReady, ExactPath data, our PIM, our Florida Fast data, our STAR data, our classroom grade, we look at the student as a whole and then make decisions on how we can support them, lack issues, they've been active, so they're in there.
So half of our enrollment is supported by tier two or tier three?
Yes.
Now, are these, when you say tier two and two, tier three, are these students that like have IEPs or 504s or these just...
So much of ours, but I don't know how these students work. Like I said, it's true, I think everyone, that's all of our students, tier two, that usually is your general, like our general population of our students that are receiving that extra support. And then tier three, a lot of times can be those students that have IEPs, um, and then it can be just a, just students as well.
So MTS is pretty much accommodations we do outside of those other accommodations? Okay, alright, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I think on behalf of our department, for um instruction, we're doing our technical adoption for social studies. Um, so we have the top two choices, we do Ed Credible again this school year. Our vendors coming to be invited. Obviously be invited to those and then we'll advertise so parents have their right. At the, each school, after social studies is what we're gonna do. Then we're also in the process of, we did a huge grant review, we went to each school and we went through. We're overseeing almost 95 grants in my office right now. We're going through the grants and we laid out for them, we were, parents will say, "Oh, it's funny." But it was getting confusing for the, what grant the money's in and what specifically has to be used for. Not only like invoices, like we'd always do in addition to like the monthly monitoring I would do, but now they want to see lesson plans, they want to see pictures, they want to see how it's being. Um, so we had a thorough, thorough review, broke it down, said this is how much money you have left in this grant. Our focus was on federal grants because we know all our Esther and our parents' money is going to come to an end in 24. Have to depend on our title grants, so it'd be title one. So we have to spend down to 15%. You can... Um, so I feel the reviews were beneficial to all the schools. They, it's what they can ask for, listening to them. Um, we're still doing instructional walkthroughs all the time. We're getting ready to schedule walkthroughs, even if we're not often as we are at the Department of, as a Bureau of School and Preparations. Um, the parental rights, so for the media special, are in the process, Ryan Diaz is... Call it, and you can search any book. Have to do that for classroom libraries as well. He was probably in the beginning of like first second week of doing this.
How long? It needs to be mandatory six through 12.
Um, but this year just, um, and we have to be in compliance by July. So our media specialists have had all the training, um, tons of forms you have to sign. So everything that they've done, I've just kept track of, so I can just hand it over and say, "Hey, we completely signed those, we can get it submitted to the state." A little bit ahead in that process because the line... So our office is always busy, but we love everybody that's by ask questions. We're very transparent in what we do.
Where's your office?
Alright.
Right over here. I don't know where she is.
Right there, where she is.
Well, I don't have never been to her office.
Alrighty. Anything else before we move on? Appreciate the review today, all the data and all the reports tonight. Lot to digest, a lot to digest. Okay, it's time now is for interest by the public. Do we have anyone here from the public who would like to address the board this evening? If not, we move on. The consent items on the agenda were approved by the adoption of the agenda. This brings us down to the items of interest by the superintendent and the board and Ms. Beshears.
Um, so I've sent an email or had Shannon send an email on my behalf today to my, my administrators and they're gonna get a list to you all of the things that are gonna go on in the schools for the next few months with dates and times. I know some of you um expressed an interest and told me that you could go in during the daytime, like if they have something special, an award ceremony or a program. So we're gonna get that to you all, so you'll, you'll be able to participate um as much as you like. And um sports are in full swing. What I really want to say is thank you to everybody that's sitting in this room tonight. That's what I really want to say. We have had some growing pains as a, as a, as a team. This, but this team has come together and I feel very blessed to have them and I feel very blessed to have my board. I mean, I think we're gonna do great things together.
Thank you. Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Do we need a meeting or anything?
We do not.
Okay, good. Ms. Donnell.
Let me make this quick so Danny won't turn anymore. Um, I got the opportunity to go to the um National Honor Society Induction Ceremony. Um, we had a good group of kids. We had a good group of seniors that was represented. Um, so congratulations to those new inductees. I mean, that cohort looked like this, you know, a standing cohort. So congratulations, um, Ms. McCord and Mr. Gray. I just wanted, again, just piggyback on what Alicia said tonight and what I said earlier. Chuck, I don't think I've got the opportunity to visit your school yet. I went, but you weren't there, so I wasn't gonna stay. But I just want to thank, you know, the elementary school for the work you guys are doing. I know at the beginning of the year, you guys, you know, just was, had a lot going on and I know you guys was like, had a lot of concern for what was going on at your school cause you, I mean, honestly, you probably didn't feel like you knew what was gonna be what. But I never lost faith in us as a district. Um, it seemed like, you know, when we, you know, when times get hard, we get to work. So just congratulations on you guys for just the way the data looks tonight and um I'm just excited to see what our data looks like at the end of the year. Even if it's what it is right now, it does my heart good to just see that we are making gains and we're doing what we need to do to identify what our student needs and what we need as a district. My main concern really though is we need teachers. But I mean, it's not that we're not doing, you know, the things we can, you know, to get those teachers, but that's the main thing I can see from what I'm seeing tonight is we really need teachers and we need them across our district as a whole. So I don't know what, you know, we can do about that, but the data looks good. Everyone looks like, you know, they're here, they're engaged and they're doing what needs to be done in order for us, you know, to meet the needs of our students in our community. So I just want to thank you guys tonight for your hard work and everything that you're doing for all the data that was presented us tonight and just the courage that you guys had to come and to speak with us and, you know, be put on the spot, but to give us the information that we need so we know where we're at as a district. So thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Agner.
Just thank you to everybody. I appreciate all the hard work that you do every day, day in and day out. And I know sometimes you feel like it's not appreciated, but it is. Children are precious, very precious. And uh sometimes we want to give up, throw our hands and give up, but you know, it takes a special person to do what y'all do. And I just appreciate you. Shannon, do you want me to make a copy of this and scan it to everybody? I mean, scan it in to everybody or you will? Mm-hmm. Yeah, can you, you want to do that? Okay, okay.
That'd be great.
And we will, we will all look over this curriculum. I'm sure if you've looked at it and you're fine with it, then I'm sure it'll be fine, but...
I just got one concern and I don't, I don't know if I need to get with you one-on-one, Alicia, but I mean, I don't know, it's just, I feel like our schools are getting hit with a lot with, from the outside and as a community, I want to support any program that's in our community, but I mean, our kids are doing a lot. It seemed like they're doing a lot and it seemed like it's a lot less time for instruction anymore. So I don't, I mean, I don't, I have that concern, but I mean, I'm, I am glad that we've looked at it and we as a board, we get our opportunity to look at it. But just my main concern is, it's only eight days, but still, we've seen how, how little 15 minutes can equals 11 days. So that's my only concern.
But this is mandated by the state, correct?
That is not mandated by the state, no.
That's not mandated. It just covers some of the um statutes.
Statute. I got you.
And they did choose...
Impact.
Yeah, but our kids have six periods and a lot of those kids look forward to that outlet of PE even for those eight days. So that's why I'm saying, I'm not against it, but it is a concern.
Hi, Ms. Mathis.
Well, I just, the, the teachers behind the data, I was thinking about them and I know that there are a lot of teachers that are working really, really hard and they're looking at this data and looking at these kids and a lot of them saying, "I know you better than this." And so they probably, I've seen so many teachers say, "Little Johnny did not test where he's at. This is not true." And so I think that, you know, that they're all, there's a lot of them that are working really hard to bring out the, the best that they can in their kids and the, the data, as we look at it tonight, when you go, when you trace it all the way down to the butts in the seat and the teacher's standing with a student, we know that teacher cares and that she's doing the best that she can and we just need to keep them in our prayers. And if we were giving out Grammys for classroom teachers tonight, the first grade math class deserves a Grammy, math teachers, because they just really have hit it out of the park. I'm very proud of them, but all the teachers, I mean, it just... but all the teachers, I mean, that, just across the board, and they're under a lot of stress, they're under a lot of pressure, it's not an easy job, so. That's about.
Thank you, Ms. Carlton.
Okay, thank you, uh, I want to congratulate the middle school band for their uh going for, I guess you'd call it competition, so congratulate them. And as Alicia said, we have a lot of sports going on every day, just here and, here on the road and at home, so a lot's going on. Uh, our Florida school boards actually have our legislative days next week, uh, and I'm not sure uh who all will be attending, but we do have those, uh, and I too appreciate all the, the data and the presentation, and uh, I want to give a great thank you to the district for all the hard work, and I know it's, I know it's hard work, it's not just, doesn't come easy.
Alright, thank you, uh, just to close out, as I said just a moment ago, this is a lot of, lot of to digest this evening, but here, here's my take, and that is that, uh, we've talked about being a team, and certainly, if we don't work together, then we don't want to get anything accomplished, if we try to pit ourselves against each other, then nothing's gonna happen, so working as a team, but then taking where you're at, you gotta know where you've been, where you're at, and where you want to go. And this data helps us, and also the plans that's already in the process is to strategize and to, to know how to get to where you want to go, so, uh, you know, at least we know that this is on the mind and is on, it's, it's in the works, we're trying to do the very best for our kids, try to bring them up where they need to be, and overall, as far as the district, it will put us where we want to be as far as the district, so there again, uh, a lot of hard work, yes, a lot of, uh, and yet a lot of hard work yet to come, so we just want to work together, whatever I think that the board can do to help, then that's what we want to do. You're in the trenches, and um you're the ones having to, to see this through, but thank you. And other than that, we thank you for coming, and uh, do I have a motion to second that we adjourn? Uh, Ms. Carlton makes the motion, Ms. Mathis seconds it, all in favor, say aye. And anybody opposed, this meeting is adjourned.